I'd like to call to Elm Hill Landminster Planner Board for June 2, 2025 at 6:30. Okay, 6:30, continued public meeting for site plans for 435, 481 Lancaster Street, map 443, parcels 1 and 2B. Elm Hill Avenue map, 356, parcel 17, multifamily development. Okay.
I'd like to note for the record that Jason Parra signed his affidavit for the 47 meeting, so he's eligible for votes. Everybody here is eligible for votes today.
I'm going to be, I haven't done this in the past, but in the situation that we're in, we're going to continue if the petitioner wants to. But a report from our interim director and information that we have found now have a praise. We found that the development is way oversized. In the city, for many, many years, we've had residential C with a total of eight units per acre. We've looked at, we were all upset in the last year when the state came in with the MBTA pushing it to 14 units per acre. I put in a petition myself last year, a year and a half ago, to make a change to allow more homes in a single family area, and that got shot down by the city council. They thought the density was going to get too high. When I look at the numbers here, it comes out to 39.7, I think that's the number they gave.
39.9.
What's that?
39.9.
39.9 units per acre. Did research in the city, could find nothing else close to that prior or existing. The only one that I found was, well, I forgot the name of it. I think it's, um, Wellington Apartments on Green Street. Okay, that's over by the ballpark and on the dead end street. And again, there was a rehab of a mill building, and they're at 27 units per acre. So about half, yeah, wrong figures, a little bit more, but I have a real problem with the direction I have had, or I suppose, let's put it that way, from the city council, who actually write our ordinances, okay, or approve the, they don't typically write them, but they approve them. Their indication has been not to have densities this high. So I just want to let you know that we have a real issue, and I'm not sure how to address it at this point. We could outright, when we look at the city zoning, we find that there is no density in business B. Okay. But it also says that it has to be consistent with the neighborhood in our special permit requirements. I don't believe this is consistent with the neighborhood under the special permit requirements. So I don't know where we've, you know, this has come up, and I did not have the information at the last meeting, the full information. Maybe that was my fault, I don't know. But I did note at that time, did it look like 10 pounds in a five-pound bag or something? Okay, that the density was excessive. We now know exactly what the density is, and it is excessive. So I just wanted to make that statement upfront, so everybody's on the same page. You may continue.
John, since it's 6:31, did you want to open the special permit?
I can, I'll open the special permit, 681, continued public hearing for a special permit 435, 481 Lancaster Street, map 443, parcels 1 and 2, 2B. Elm Hill Avenue map, 356, parcel 17, multifamily development. So both petitions are open.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the record, the applicant, Tom Bavinci, representing the applicant. And if I understand what you just said, there's some recent information documentation from the interim director that's been brought to the chair's and board's attention?
Yes, it's on his report.
I can show you.
Okay, and we had, I had just, I didn't have, you know, I didn't know.
So I'm just, in light of this.
To tell you the truth, I didn't know, when I came to the meeting before, my own fault, okay, I did not know what the density was on business B.
It's nobody's fault, but I would, just like the applicant would like the opportunity to possibly review that report, and unfortunately, we'd ask for short continuance.
Yeah, we can continue this. This is not a problem. I'm not saying I'm shutting it down.
Right, no, I understand.
Okay, I'm saying is, I feel as a mitigating factor, a substantial one, okay, and with the impact that I've had from the city council on other ordinances, I am sort of taking the lead from some history, you might say, and we've got to believe in history.
Right, no, it might be my fault, I apologize. I just hadn't seen that report before tonight, and so I would just like the opportunity to review with my clients and then to respond to it appropriately and put that in mind just for short continuation.
Yes, not a problem, okay? You may do that, I just wanted, I wanted to get the information out as soon as I could and as soon as I have that, okay? And are there options? Yeah, there are some options to, and maybe we can work, you know, because there is no sizing in business B, it sort of does give us some latitude in doing something that may not be as objectionable to the neighborhood, or better. Maybe it's a little smaller, maybe it's laid out, maybe there's a little more green space, maybe there's something for, you know, there's a bunch of options that we could put together. That's up to you folks, okay?
Right, no, I appreciate that. But if we could, the board would entertain a motion to continue it for sure.
Do you mean continue a recess and go talk about it outside?
No, I would, no, I would continue to another meeting.
That would be July then.
Right.
We actually have, so this review memo is provided on May 28 to all parties, and we actually have both of our consultants here for the peer reviews, and they are slated for only one meeting discussion. So this was induced to me that this was going to be brought up, so now we don't have the escrow funds to cover that.
Yeah, what had happened was, I mean, I had looked at it, and I also had the report. I had talked to the interim director, middle of last week, about this. So, and then he investigated it further and got down to the actual numbers.
Right. He did make a note, he said, his only note on density was, while there are no minimum or maximum density requirements for the multifamily apartments in the BB district, the proposed 292 units on a 7.31 acre site results in a density of 39.9 units per acre, the board may want to take this into consideration when evaluating the proposal against the special permit standards and the zoning ordinance. That was his only comment.
My suggestion, and it's up to the board, is, this has been continued so many times, why don't you make your presentation?
Okay.
And then we'll determine as a board whether it should be continued or not, so if we all think this is going to be an issue.
We agree with that, we'll do that, we'll do that tonight.
Because you can always ask for continuance.
Right.
All right, so that being said, for the record, Chris Anderson, Hannigan and Gary. We're here for you tonight for an update on the site, the development plans for a 292 unit apartment complex located at 435 Lancaster Street. Again, just to orientate ourselves here, we have Lancaster along the top of the page, Elm Hill with the existing gateway structure located at that intersection. Since the previous meeting, we did reevaluate the density to some extent, and as part of the overall scheme of the projects, we're actually looking to reduce the total number of residential units in the existing gateway from 40 down to 30, so that would result in a total unit count of 282 units. This is a note. With that being said, since the previous meeting, we've gone through various peer reviews, and we did provide written response to the department head comments that were provided to us relative to the overall engineering and stormwater impacts of the site. We did review that with tie and bond. At this point in time, we've addressed all their comments, with the exception of the outstanding off-site improvements, which are being coordinated with the DPW as part of this process. So we are in conversation with that department in order to address the shortcomings of the site's capacity for the stormwater mitigation elsewhere in the area. With that being said, the general intent of the site has been maintained from a layout perspective. Heather Montico, the GPI, the traffic engineer, is also here, she can review some of the traffic improvements that were done in response to the Vaness Associates comments. Relative to the site plan itself, most of their comments were relative to additional striping, no one placed your signage around the site just to help with wayfinding and other pedestrian entrances around the property. With that being said, I'll hand it off to Heather, as she can go over the traffic improvements.
So good evening, everyone. For the record, I'm Heather Monica with Dream and Peterson, and we did do a full traffic study for the project. It was dated February 24, 2025, and then we had our first planning board meeting on April 7 of this year. Since that meeting, we haven't been in front of the board, but we have received two peer review letters from VAI, one dated May 12, 2025, and we responded to that comment letter on May 27, 2025. And since then, VAI actually turned around a very quick review letter on the 29th, and I'm going to kind of just go through the recommendations from them on this plan. So it was requested at the last meeting, as well as in VAI's letter, that we collect some local crash data from the police department. We went ahead and did that, we looked at the last six years available, we updated the crash rate, crash rate worksheets, and we found that the Lemester Police Department data followed very similar trends to the mass DOT data. So VAI considered that comment closed in their latest comment letter dated May 29. Some additional mitigation measures, so I didn't present the plan at the last meeting, but this driveway has always been proposed opposite Viscloide at the signal, so it will form a more standard four-way signalized intersection. When VAI reviewed the traffic study, they had suggested that we incorporate left turn lanes at the traffic signal. We don't feel, in our response letter on the 27th, we definitely agreed that we could put a left turn lane, an eastbound left turn lane, but we didn't think a westbound left turn lane was necessary, necessary because the amount of traffic, it just didn't warrant it. In VAI's latest review letter on the 29th, they had agreed with that. So we did add the left turn lane, we had bike accommodations. They also requested, sorry, we didn't have surveys, so I tried to include an aerial in here, but at Howard Street, further to the east, they suggested a do not block the box. We're going to prepare like proper 25% design plans for the city's review, and then we'll get their comments and go to final design. But for talking purposes at this meeting, we just showed the aerial, so a do not block box over at pigment markings over at Howard Street, that was also suggested by VAI. There's a mid-block crossing here today in between the signalized intersection and Elm Hill. VAI suggested that we put those flashing rectangular rapid flashing beacons in, an RRFB. We suggested in our review letter, or in our response to their comments on the 27th, that we just remove that mid-block crossing, because we're going to enhance this crossing here with the signal, make sure it's got the proper ADA ramps and everything. In addition, they made another comment that at the Elm Hill intersection, we should put a cross in Cross Lancaster. So we didn't see a need for having a signalized crossing here, another crossing over here at the intersection. So in their letter on the 29th, they also agreed that we could remove this. So that's some sidewalk work, we've got to get rid of the ramps, we've got to remove the pavement markings, ramps on both sides, but that was agreeable to them. So that's what's currently proposed, and this plan was submitted to the city this morning. And then getting back to Elm Hill, we'll make sure all the ramps are correct, we'll put new ramps in on that southwest corner, we'll put a crosswalk in across Lancaster with the appropriate warning signs about the crosswalk ahead, re-strike the stop lines, re-strike the crosswalks, put in any ADA ramps and make sure that those all match. Again, that's going to go through a formal design with survey and all that, and make sure it meets all ADA standards, but that is the plan for now. So let me just check my notes. So yeah, that's what I was going to say, that we would just, we will prepare a more formal set of plans with traffic signal data and what have you for the cities and our peer review consultants. I believe that they suggested that the escrow get increased for that future review of the plans, and I think the applicant has any hesitation about that. And then the last thing was that they suggested some transportation demand measures, some TDM measures on site, and where amenable to doing that was having a transportation coordinator, things like that, like racks, things on the site. So we're fine with doing all that stuff. They also wanted us to contact Mark for a stop at the site, either adjacent on Lancaster in the site. They had already reached out to Mark before we even got the comment from VAI, so they're completely amenable and hoping that that will all work out. So that's, as of this point, the only thing that we owe the city on a traffic perspective would be planned with more details about the traffic signal, some more survey to show how the do not block box will work, make sure that the ramps are in fact ADA compliant and what have you at that Elm Hill intersection. So there's nothing that we really disagreed with at this point. That brings you up to data traffic.
Just, I have one question.
Yep, absolutely.
In terms of, obviously, density is a concern. Would any, and I know you can't speak for VAI, but would any of your results change at all?
If anything, I would assume you guys want the density to go down, so trips would go down, everything would go down. So what we've analyzed is the highest.
Okay, and then, but would, as a result of that, would you change any of the suggestions, modifications?
Oh, signal timings or something like that? I guess we could take a look at it if it changed significantly. 10 units, I wouldn't expect the traffics. The traffic out on Lancaster is going to be much higher than the traffic coming in and out of the site, even if we reduce it. So I don't, I don't think that we would be changing the signal timings that much, but we could take a look at that with our design plans.
I have a question. Where the signal's going to be, you're going to have one exit that way out to the signal, correct?
Yeah, it's one lane in, one lane in.
One lane out.
Yep.
So if there's a signal there, it's backed up, it's going to force most of the traffic onto Elm Hill Ave. Has that been getting to that?
Oh, we, I mean, we distributed the traffic based on a full, we used Journey to Work data to figure out where people, you know, who lives in Lemister and where do they work and how do they go. So we definitely used the other driveways, you know, we distributed the traffic accordingly.
So do you think the other drivers will have more as a result of there being a light at the intersection of Lancaster?
No, I mean, I think most people will try to use the light, because it's not easy to make a left out on Elm Hill either, you know, especially in the PM, you know? So even, there's plenty of room here to queue cars. I think if they're going to queue, they'd rather queue at the signal than queue over at the unsignalized, it's probably safer.
I'm just wondering if that drives more traffic.
Drive preference.
If I'm reading it right, you're estimating over 1,000 trips a day?
A thousand, that's probably correct for that many apartments.
And so one way in, one way out, otherwise you're along the side street, but 1,000 trips a day?
Yeah. 1,000 trips a day, though that's in 24 hours. We look at the peak period, right, from the peak hour.
Which is around 400 trips, 300, high 300s, if my memory serves.
No, we have, in our traffic study, right, total trips in the whole site, there are some pass by because of the restaurant and whatnot. It was 154, this is, again, assuming the site's vacant, 154 AM peak hour trips, 189 PM peak hour trips, and 161 on Saturday midday peak hour trips. If you compare that to the existing, it's 118 more on an AM, 70 trips on a PM, and 81 on a Saturday over what's there today. And we did count it today, we didn't just use fictitious numbers, we counted the driveways.
Can we have Vaness and Associates here to speak to any comments? If you'd like to present as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you state your name for reference?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Scott Thornton with Vaness and Associates. We prepared, as Heather indicated, we prepared a couple of comment letters on the traffic study, the site plans, and parking for the project. To get right to your question, sir, regarding the impact of this intersection, they're proposing to add the left turn lane to Viscloide Avenue. We think that's going to increase the capacity of the intersection. So the, that and re-timing, I think there's proposal, a proposal for a new traffic signal detection system and equipment there. So we would think that the operations there would improve from what's currently the case, even with the additional traffic. With regards to the, with regards to the documents that were reviewed, what we had was, as Heather indicated, we had reviewed their traffic study from February of this year, and their updated traffic information that was, that we received on May 27th. We also reviewed the Hannigan engineering plans from February and responses to our comments that are dated May 27th. In terms of our initial review of May 12th, we had three traffic comments, nine site-related comments, and five parking-related comments. We think that with the latest information that's been provided, the traffic comments are generally closed, the site comments, there's four of the nine are generally closed, and with the parking, three of the five comments are generally closed. We think there's some additional information that could be provided by the applicant on those items that aren't, that still remain outstanding. As Heather indicated, the crash data, we had requested some additional data on police grad, local police crash histories for the study area that was provided, and we feel that that comment is generally closed, showed general agreement with the state DOT data that was initially provided. As it relates to the concept plan and the mid-block crosswalk that was discussed, we do agree that it makes, you know, with the improved connection for pedestrians at the Elm Hill drive, or the Elm Hill intersection with Lancaster, and the improved pedestrian connection at Viscloide and Lancaster, we think it makes sense to eliminate that mid-block crosswalk. It's not, it's not well lit, there's no streetlights on either side. We had initially proposed the installation, as Heather indicated, on the RRFB, push-button activated crossing device. We don't think that that's, given that the proposed, the proposed changes for those other two locations will be borne by the applicant, we think that that's a better solution than adding the RRFB there. And the Lancaster Street, Elm Hill Ave crosswalk, we think that's a good location for that other crosswalk to be installed with wheelchair ramps and the crosswalk markings. And on the other side, by the restaurant there, that area needs some, needs some attention in terms of, in terms of grading and how the pedestrian accommodations will be made. So we had, that's one of the things that we have requested, you know, if there's additional information, or when additional information related to the concept plan is provided with some details fleshed out, we had suggested that the applicant be required to provide additional funds for escrow, so that those, the next phase of those designs can be reviewed. The last comment related to traffic had to do with the TDM plan, and we had, we had made a number of recommendations for ways to sort of discourage the use of single-occupant vehicle trips and encourage alternative transportation modes. We noted that the applicant had agreed to establish the TDM program, and they had consulted with Monmouth Transit, and that Mark had indicated they were interested in establishing bus service to the project. We think that's a good sign, and we urge the applicant to continue working with them on that issue. Moving on to the site plan comments, we had requested some information related to vehicle turning and circulation through the site. We have requested information specifically for the designed vehicle that the Lemester Fire Department uses, and we had, we deferred to what the fire chief, what the fire chief's opinion of the circulation and the plans are. We noted that there was some encroachment of center lines, both at the driveway coming out onto Lancaster Street and throughout the, in a few locations in the site. So we just made some suggestions about modifying drive aisles if possible, and maybe revising some radii. We had, we'd also requested some signage, as Chris had indicated, related to the circulation where it goes from two-way to one-way around the side of, around the side of one of the buildings. That signage has been added, pavement markings had been added as requested, sidewalk, ADA compliant wheelchair ramps should be provided for crossing Lancaster Street projects on the driveway, those are, those are part of the plan. We'd also requested some information on bicycle racks, and if they could be provided. Bicycle racks are shown in the garages, was, I had a question about how many bikes could be parked in the spaces, in the garages. But we had recommended that exterior bike racks be provided for each of the buildings. There were racks that were provided for eight bikes at Building 2, and if possible, recommend that the exterior racks should be added for the other buildings as well. And then we had a question about how the movement of, or how moving would be accommodated, and the applicant provided responses that it's more of a coordination thing that can be managed with the property management team. So moving on to parking, there were, we requested information on the number of units and the So moving on to parking, there were, we requested information on the number of units and the, uh, the fact that the parking, uh, supply meets the demand or, or meets the, the zoning requirements. Requested dimensions for parking spaces which have been, which have been added. The number of, we had a question about the parking spaces that are 16 feet in length. And, uh, it was, it was demonstrated that the two-foot landscape area that's provided within the zoning ordinance permits that 16-foot long space. We had a question about the loading zones for the commercial building. Our opinion is that the loading zone, a loading zone should be provided for the commercial building. Because we think that if there, particularly if there's a restaurant that goes in there, we think there may be some, um, a lot of deliveries that would occur there and a loading space would be a benefit. And then in terms of the, uh, the last comment related to parking had to do with EV spaces. And, um, we had indicated 10% of the spaces, uh, should be provided as EV, um, as EV spaces. And the applicant indicated that a total of 50, uh, capable parking spaces will be, EV-ready or capable parking spaces will be provided. That's about 10%. If the city goes to, uh, the 2023 stretch code, um, there's a, there's a requirement for 20% of the parking spaces that should be EV-ready. But again, at this, at this point, um, we initially requested that 10% be considered and 10% has been provided.
You say the state was going to 20%?
20%.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, and there's, right. And it, it's a lot.
Yeah, it is. When you have to put them in on top of your regular parking. Because I can't count that total parking. Can you?
So if I don't have an EV, I can park in an EV section?
No, so the EV spaces.
Would it be a fine, like a handicap?
I don't know about that.
Which is then, the problem is, if you have 10% of your parking spaces that I can't use because I don't have an EV, that there are enough parking spaces for the remainder of the people.
So, uh, they're EV-capable spaces, so all the conduits run and they're brought online as needed?
So they don't have to be set up, but they have to be?
They have to be ready. So all you have to do is effectively run the wire.
So you add or subtract?
Correct.
Good answer.
I've been asked that question multiple times.
Are they going to assign parking spaces here?
So, but if they make them, back to the EV, if they make them EV-capable, and in the future you make them EV units, then assess, essentially, even though the debt takes away from your total parking.
Not necessarily.
Unless an EV is parked there.
Well, maybe if it's an EV, but it's, you know, that means that the EV can't park there. That means that.
Non-EV.
Yeah.
They're provided on a needed basis, based on what the unit, or what the tenants are actually using. So if there are 10 regularly, uh, EV vehicles on site, you have 10 spaces. So it's kind of a, as the development proceeds and as, you know, cars and regulations change over the years, we don't know what's going to happen. There's a big push to go to the EV side, and you just accommodate for that as an EV.
Yeah, well, I, I know. And it's a whole open question on EV because it was a big push, now it's dropping off a little bit, and. Yeah, and what does, because it, there's a possibility that, you know, if somebody fills all those spots with the regular, regular cars, then the guy with the EV can't charge, okay?
And that becomes a property management issue.
Not a zoning issue.
Yeah.
That's a property.
Yeah, no, I, I know it's not.
That's their problem.
Well, no, I realize that. But at the same time, I'm trying to look ahead to the people living there. I don't necessarily always look at, at zoning issues. I'm looking for the, the future of people in Lemonsir to, after our issues. So if I can stop an issue now, though some of the ordinance is not, I'm going to try to do it. So, you know, that's, you know, if you could make them essentially EV and, you know, maybe you don't have to wire them now, but those are going to be, you know, those would have, but.
Somebody would obviously have to pay, right?
Yeah. Oh, no, no, no. There, there has to be some kind of metering. But I, I realize that. That comes with EV.
People have, you know, there's a meter there. Most people want to park there, they have EVs. Even on Seastown, there's 15.
But that's a.
Tusslers and there's no cars in them.
Yeah, no, no.
So what I mean is it, it's, I don't think it means that much.
The, the parking, the, the parking is so tight that there are, with the current configuration, the parking is so tight, there are no extra. In, in Seastown, there are hundreds of extra lots, a lot of extra lots. Here there are none, so with the current configuration.
But I think they have 11 more.
Than they did.
Lots than you require, thanks.
Correct. And then with the reduction, that's another 15 there, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah, close. You're right at that point, but it's just a, at this discussion point, we have to be kind of conservative.
So are those going to be visitor spaces?
Visitor spaces, whatever they need to be. The dispatch spaces.
I mean, they just park whatever they want, right? Visitors? So I come in to visit somebody and there's no reserved parking, I just park. So, so if you have, uh, 300, well, let's say you get 50 visitors on a weekend, that could be four or five good parties. We got a problem.
This discussion.
I know it, I just.
The ordinance calls for 470. For 473, he's, they're providing 484.
I understand, but they should make a, a reserved lot for visitors or a reserved spot for visitors.
But then you really would take spots away from people who would use them on a regular basis.
Well, well, I think.
Put it somewhere else?
Sal, I think what that stands is that we got to change the ordinance. Okay, so we read to the audience as it is today, but not, we're quiet over, but it, it's a consideration. It's a, you know, a comfort factor for people, that's all, at this point, unless we change the ordinance, we haven't done that. So, okay.
What are you doing with the snow? Are you trucking it off or?
So there are, there are dedicated snow storage areas. It is, the site is quite tight. There's no question about that. So hey, snow storage, once the snow piles get too large and they start infringing upon maneuverability and parking, they're going to have to be trucked off.
Did you read on Mike's, O'Hara's, take those snow storers on page four?
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, pretty much it's inadequate, so.
So you agree to truck it off?
It would need to be trucked off.
Yeah, we're going to have to have a management point for that.
Does the board have any more questions for Vanessa?
Maybe you won't hit the ground with all those cars parked there. Maybe you won't have to sell them around the block. How many in the visitor lot?
Okay, good.
I'll ask the same question, just as a courtesy, the question I asked, does that, do any of your recommendations change if the, if the density is reduced? The number of units is reduced?
No, I don't, I don't think so. I think that, that, uh, in general, the, the operations are, you know, they're probably not going to change. They'll, they'll get a little better at the intersections with the fewer units. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't step back on any of the commitments. The do not block the box, uh, marking at Howard Street, think that's a, you know, that's a, that's a good ti- uh, a, a good way to address that issue. I should say that, that we haven't done a deep dive on the concept plan because we just received that today. But, um, so there are, so there are some other things that, that should be reviewed there. But I, I wouldn't expect, I wouldn't expect that plan to change significantly from what's been presented.
I, I think don't block the box that, that Howard Street is needed today.
Yeah, exactly.
I've gotten hung up there several times.
I have two businesses right there. I don't like. It's because you never have the businesses. Sorry, Tom.
And then, um, during the voting process, during the voting process, we can discuss, um, receiving an addendum to the peer review contract for, uh, review of the concept plan. We can discuss that.
Okay. So do I have anyone else in the audience that has any questions? I'll ask again. Do I have anyone from the audience that has any questions? Yes, sir.
Traffic consultants.
What are your name for the record and address?
Henry Ferrari, 24 Dartmouth Street. I own the whole block in that. Plan up there, 439 Lancaster Street. Hugh McJellis was here at the last meeting, acting people. There's an entrance on Lancaster Street to his property at the warehouses up there. I haven't seen that across the hall by the traffic people. That's, that's one thing. Is that entrance is only about, I don't know, 80 or 90 feet away from the proposed traffic lights, Viscaloid Lancaster, and the entrance to the site?
That's the entrance to the next, the business, yes. There, there's a good question. Does anybody have an answer for that?
I can speak to that. I, we vice talked about it a little bit. We, um, as part of our traffic study, we included that commercial driveway as part of our, uh, traffic study. So we do have the impacts of it. It's been documented in the traffic study. It's a signal there today. It's going to be a signal tomorrow. We're not really changing the, the roadway in that much of a difference. There's, there's still a signal today. Traffic is stopping on Lancaster Street. Uh, we did count the driveway, made sure we assessed it, see if we would have any, uh, large negative impacts on it, but we don't. And that is documented in the traffic study.
Okay, thank you.
After parking, okay? 15 years I own the building, my parking lot has always been encroached by the people in the dual, dual-point building, the restaurant. I currently see no, nothing in the plan that helps isolate and identify the access for my tenants and their customers. And the parking that's designed to that property.
Okay. Do we have, can you address that? Has somebody addressed it?
This one? Um, so the 439 building is located right here. So currently it is noted that the area is just a broad expansive pavement. It's, I don't want to say it like this, but it's a free-for-all. Uh, as part of the overall redesign, we're restricting and creating more defined drive aisles and driveways in order to gain access to our development as well as maintain the connection and service to the 439. So as you can see here, here's the limit of the existing pavement. And what we're doing is, is we're providing a landscaped area separating the parking for the apartment complex away and separate from the 439 building. So there are effectively two separate parking lots at the end of the day.
So it is well-defined and?
There'll be lawn and ceded curbs, the traditional parking lot.
So you got some grass in there today where it's all pavement? It's pretty much all pavement.
It's all pavement.
It's effectively all pavement up through about here.
Yeah.
Going this direction. So at the end of the day, you're going to have a landscaped island with trees and whatnot. Uh, curb radii, curving, the whole nine yards in order to create that level of block gap.
So that will be on the revised plan that you submitted?
It's already on the original plan.
It's on the plan now.
So currently there's a driveway in the middle of the block that looks like it's gone now, right?
Correct. So the existing driveway for the development is actually right here.
Yeah.
And that just extends into the development and provides access all throughout the site.
And now if people want to access this business, this building, they need to come around which way? How do they get in?
Correct. So they would have to enter through the light or through the two entrances along the common hallway.
And they have to navigate parking lots for the, for the tenants to get into his building?
Correct.
So last time you were here, didn't you show us a plan that showed some kind of a road coming into this? I thought you talked about, you were going to give him access to this area instead of having everything go through here.
Not to my knowledge, I was never.
Are you going to, somebody mentioning that or? Get it wrong, but I thought you were going to have another access to this property through here.
So you go straight out to Viscaloid Reds? Red, Red, what, 17 Red?
I'm facing too, but I don't know if that was.
Uh, that's never been truly vetted out quite yet.
Mr. Fry, how many, um, how many people do you usually have in that lot on a, on a going basis?
It's usually like anywhere between three and six cars.
Would it be advantageous to have that other entrance?
For people coming into, for meetings.
Yeah. I mean, he's defining a lot, but would it be better to have a little way in for the lights?
It's a challenge being landlocked right there. I, as someone trying to get into that location, I, I can see how that would, might be frustrating.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would request that, that driveway be to, to the back corner there. And he can come straight out and go right out to the light.
Yeah, green, too, the engineer, that green thing, that's, that's like.
Well, he's giving you definition, but.
What's the question?
You might need, you should have an entrance coming from your light as well. Like Tom was mentioning, another way into your lot.
Instead of having them come all the way through Elm Hill or try to maneuver their way through, it would be a lot easier to have a straight path right here, wouldn't it?
I think that would be better. That would, that would keep some of his traffic out of the development. Because they come straight in, straight to his property and not going to the development at all.
It wouldn't take much, we'd take a little bit of grass change and some paving.
We can evaluate that.
We could look at that.
At the park.
Okay, all right.
That would be a great idea.
Yeah.
So that would, that would be sort of the purpose plus define your lot.
When I bought the land.
Yeah.
So like 20 foot right away.
Yeah.
Goes back over.
Either way, people are going to have a lot. If there's a separate entrance.
We think it might be dual, so we would look at that.
Yeah.
I don't think it's a major change.
It's not a major change.
No. And, and it'd just make everything flow better instead of trying to finagle the way through the apartment.
Right, agreed. That's good.
That would help, Mr. Fry.
Yes. Well, that works.
Okay. So I have any other questions? Okay. At this time, I know we've got significant, uh, changes. We got some more work to do on this. Got the stormwater to be completed, okay? And, uh, so I think a motion would be in order to.
John, we have the storm.
Stormwater up here.
Oh, yeah.
Taiyavon, is it?
Sorry about that. I was getting too far. You got ahead of myself.
Would you like to?
Yes, yeah. I want everyone to permit all the information that we have today.
Uh, Tim Grace from Taiyavon. We did a stormwater peer review, uh, project. We issued about five pages of comments, so I'm not going to go through them all. Essentially, high level, because this is a redevelopment project, they don't have to fully comply with the standards. They only have to comply with the redevelopment regulations. And the redevelopment regulations, I think minus the phosphorus removal reg, uh, they comply with essentially everything else. And they are allowed to qualify for redevelopment because what's out there now is essentially a sea of pavement and buildings. And then what they're proposing is less pavement and buildings. So, uh, like I said, we issued about five pages of comments. They addressed all of that. The phosphorus one seems like it's going to be handled off-site with coordination with the P W. So, I mean, that's, that's essentially it. If, if they are going to scale back the, the project, I will say there may be an opportunity that they could hit that phosphorus requirement on-site. Maybe they install some rain gardens or something like that. But, you know, if they're going to reduce the scope of development, they could potentially do a few more things to maybe mitigate all of their. maybe mitigate all of their impacts just on that site. Another thing I wanted to point out is the drainage infrastructure in Lancaster Street is woefully undersized.
Yeah.
And that's not their fault, that's an existing condition, but, you know, any effort that can be made, not only by this project, but future projects, to reduce what they're discharging for runoff into that city system is gonna be a big benefit to the municipality. And that's essentially it.
That, that inability of the city, let's put it that way, to take care of that water, does that have a reverse impact on a project like this?
So, it's difficult. Could the city system back up onto the property, potentially?
Yeah.
I guess for reference, the drainage pipe in Lancaster Street is twelve inches, a twelve-inch diameter pipe, and, and so, I guess for comparison, the proposed infrastructure that's being proposed, they use twelve-inch pipe to connect one catch basin to a drain manhole. So, you can see that it's, it's undersized by a factor of at least two, I mean, in a street like that, you probably would wanna have thirty-six, forty-eight inch pipes, what's there now is twelve. I, I think what is gonna protect the development from any flooding is the fact that it's, the city system is at its lowest point of the site, the rest of it's significantly higher, so it's unlikely that it's actually gonna back up into their parking lots. But, I mean, that depends, you know, rain events are becoming more frequent and, you know, longer and producing more runoff, so it is a problem that I would suggest the city try to address at some point, but again, that's outside the purview of this particular project.
Tim, what about Fallbrook, the base of the hill there from that whole project?
Yeah, so, that twelve-inch pipe that I just talked about essentially snakes all the way down Lancaster Street. So, if we were gonna do something to, I guess, mitigate the problem, you're looking at a, like a municipal project of digging up the drain manholes and relaying appropriate-sized drainage piping in Lancaster Street. I actually called the city engineer at one point about this, 'cause I was shocked that it, I said, this can't be right, this is a twelve-inch pipe. And he says, oh, no, it's right, it's a, it's a twelve-inch pipe. Unfortunately, it's an existing condition that's just out there and that the city's been living with, but if, if something was gonna be done, you'd be replacing probably five or six different structures along Lancaster Street.
But, that definitely would happen last.
Exactly.
All the cascade all the way down to the low point.
Cascade all the way down to the low point.
To Fallbrook.
Correct, yep.
Yeah.
Normally, we like to, normally, we like to see more onsite infiltration for projects like this, the problem here is, so I think the soils are okay, but the groundwater elevation is high. So, if we're gonna do something, it would really be some shallow infiltration features, like I said, like some rain gardens along Lancaster Street would probably work nicely, but you really, probably can't do a full-blown detention basin or infiltration basin on this site, 'cause you just don't have the separation of groundwater.
Okay.
And to speak on that, yeah, so we've done soil testing throughout. It's generally fill material and in the stuff you do find, unfortunately, it's not the greatest material in the world, it's a much more tighter, compact hill. So, I hundred percent agree, if we had sand and gravel all day long, we would be infiltrating, but due to the existing condition of the site, that combined with the high groundwater table, infiltration is definitely an issue. To the stormwater point, I did have the same conversation with city engineers that is needing a twelve-inch pipe. That's why when we connect it to the system, we evaluate each connection point individually to make sure that we didn't overwhelm one structure over the other. So, the site does provide, like I mentioned, a general decrease in the peak rates going to all the design points, all the design points around the site as well as the individual connection points within Lancaster Street.
Better now, better with the project, than before the project?
Yes, so it'll be a net decrease in the peak rates of flow. In addition to that, a lot of, especially in front of this portion of the property, a lot of it is catch basin, the catch basin connections, which are not very advantageous. Those are your primary, first points of failure in a big storm event, because you have water coming in from the top, you got water coming from the sides, it just kinda blows up the structure originally. So, as part of this, we are disconnecting all catch basin and catch basin connections in front of the site, so now you have a dedicated catch basin structure to a dedicated manhole structure to be more in line with formal current engineering practice. So, we're not, we're not ignoring the fact that there is an issue, but we are trying to improve it with our means.
So, in essence, there is, to the, to the water on Lancaster Street, does a reduction?
Correct.
Okay.
And rates.
And the, the DPW reviewed, the peer review and the previous comments, and they had nothing additional to add, they're okay.
Good.
From the big store.
We're always looking for improvements if we can get it, you can use the help.
No.
I reduce.
Yeah, I'm not gonna get it.
I know, it was.
Okay. Do I have anyone else to make a presentation? Okay. I think the indication I got with some of the things that are outstanding, that, that should be continued.
John, can I also just add that we just have some comments that just came in from the police department, that they would ask for a little more time to review the peer review of the traffic. That came in late Friday. And then the wire, I wasn't sure about this, we hadn't heard back, but we did receive an email this morning that said, I'm still waiting, this is from Joe Corrier, I'm still waiting on confirmation on some changes that I asked for on the traffic lights that were not in the peer review. Chris, do you know anything about that?
So, I did have a conversation with Joe Corrier, a lot of his comment was relative to the components that actually go into the actual system, to make sure that they're all consistent with every other light in the city. In addition to that, one of the questions was about a existing light pole that's on this corner of the Viscloide Lancaster Street intersection, and that pole, I believe, is being removed as part of the overall traffic improvement. So, the issue is that there's a pole here that has more of the lights that base into the site, and I guess every time a semi truck tries to make that turn, they either miss it or they do hit it and they're off. So, it's a feature that has to be constantly replaced.
And, and then, Mr. Anderson, just for the record, you have a, your responses to all the department head comments and peer review comments, do you, do you, it's lengthy, so I don't expect you, but do you think you've touched on all of them, as we've discussed with all of them?
I believe we have addressed the department head comments, I know the police wants to do their review a little bit further. The EPW comments were the next one, they had quite a few comments, we've addressed all those. The outstanding items would be the additional bicycle spaces and other features, if you will, would be the most outstanding comment, and as well as Taiabon's disconfirmation of, yes, we are doing upside improvement work.
Okay.
So, when they come back, when you come back, you say the density is a question, the traffic is an outstanding question, are there any other outstanding issues that they'll need to speak to when they come back again, just so we're all on the same page?
Final designs, right? That's not the final.
No.
We're gonna look at that, other entrances.
They're gonna swap the other entrances.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll review that, yes.
Review that. We'll be sure to get the police comments back. I'll just touch base with wire, just to make sure we have it in writing, that they're good, the outstanding VAI, VAI items, the Taiabon issue. Before we address density, I'll just need a vote from the board to receive an addendum to the peer review contract for the concept plan review not to exceed $5,000. The applicant said they were amenable to that, correct?
Yeah.
So, we'll need a vote for that.
Second by sale?
Yep.
Does every query vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that first, before we continue.
So, he just publicly made a motion, and Stiles acted.
Yep.
Motion by Sal?
No, motion by Paul.
Motion by Paul, okay. Second by Sal.
Yeah.
To, what was the actual wording?
The board to vote to receive an addendum to the peer review contract for the concept plan review not to exceed $5,000.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had it right.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion on that? You know, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no. We need some recommended schedules.
Well, then, we gotta talk about the density.
Well, we've talked about the density, I, I, you know.
Do you have recommendations for them?
I don't have a recommendation at this time.
I'd like to know what the applicant thinks.
Right, and we, we hope to address that, we understand that you're inclined to continue this matter, and we would conclude that issue and then the next.
Okay, okay, just wanted to give you an opportunity to respond.
Tom, you have, you have.
I do, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I don't, at this time, I don't know what, where we should go on that, you know, we may have to have some discussion with the city council, with other people, look at the area, and, you know, we have the latitude to do a number of things, so, and I'm saying this is what it should be, I think I know what it shouldn't be.
I'm not gonna continue here until July 21st at 6:40?
Before, before we do that, I don't, I don't wanna give Mr. Anderson homework, but I, I'm just looking at your, and maybe, maybe this is, have, you didn't, I don't see any response to the, to the plane void comments, and I'm not saying you needed to have them tonight, did you not, I don't think you had those, that's why, right?
Yeah, there are more statements of facts, but we can provide it more written.
That's fine, but the biggest issue is apparently the density.
Yeah.
Okay.
July 21st, 6:40.
July?
Second.
6:30?
Forty.
Oh, 6:40. Okay.
So, that's for the site one, right?
That's the first one on the open public meeting. I have a motion made and seconded on the open public meeting, July 20th, 24th?
First.
Twenty-first, I can't even read my own writing. Twenty-first at 6:30. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
Six forty-one for the special permit, second.
Yeah, I have motion made and seconded, July 24th at 6:41, for the continued, for the special permit. Any further discussion? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote say no, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I had to watch the tape. She's taking it. She's taking it back. I have it just timed spread down, I'm gonna have to look at it. I, I have it.
I'm not, I, that's an area we need to heat down. Okay. Okay, it's a public hearing. City council petition, 48-25, Thomas Semper Benzey, Representative Wayman LLC, proposes to change his following zoning district to be located entirely in Resident B District for 26 Union Street.
Yes.
Assesses 9-4, 40 Union Street. 94 and 44 Union Street. So, 9.6.
Probably busy tonight.
That's good, huh?
I must've been a bad boy. You need to do something with it. Pull record, Tom, yeah, again, so this is, you have in front of you, I don't know how to discover, but you have in front of you a site plan overview that shows three properties, my client's property is the 26 Union Street, and that's right now Business B Zone. Joining in the application are two residences, part, one of which is also a Business B, and that's a 40 Union Street, that's a residence, house, housing, and then the backyard of 44 Union Street is also Business B currently, and so, the request is to consider and to rezone these Residence B as is the rest of the neighborhood. And you'll see from the plan here in front of you, virtually all of the properties in this neighborhood are currently residences, so the ones are buddying in the rear and the front and across the street, on Union Street are all residences. The, the house that is 40 Union Street, although it's in the Business B District currently, that's, that is a residence, and in the backyard of 44 Union Street is a Business B, but that's the residential backyard. So, we think the, the proposed rezoning actually makes the, the properties and the property, my client's property, 26 Union Street, more in harmony with the existing neighborhood. I don't know if you remember that site, but years ago, it was an agway, it was a feed supply business.
Right.
And then for a number of years, it was a limited commercial use and a dog kennel, was that that site?
I think we have a plan that's been approved, for a building in there. It was something, that was years ago.
There's an existing structure in the back, you can see it on the overview of the, of the trees, that, that was where the dog kennel, and I think a long time ago, the feedway.
Dog daycare.
Dog daycare, yes, exactly, I wanna use the right terminology here.
It's appropriate.
So, client has, would like to build a few duplexes, whatever's allowed under the zoning, so it'll be residential on that site, and in order to do that under the zoning, we'd need to have a rezoning. The zoning is a little cryptic in that it, it would allow currently, like garden-style apartments at that, on the business site, but it doesn't allow townhouse apartments. So, in order to accommodate his desire, these, these would be duplexes, so they'd be townhouses up and down.
Right.
And whatever, whatever the acreage would allow, that would be his intent.
That's five.
So, this is a little bit more straightforward than the one you just heard, presentation.
Yeah, Business B is five, I mean, a residential B.
Right, right, so that, and that's what he would do, like the duplexes on there. So, we're looking for rezonings or recommendation from your board to city council for positive determination, you know, relative to this. Client with Miko's here tonight, if you have any questions. Engineer Greg Roy is here tonight, in case you have any engineering questions, either existing or what is intended to be done, and, and basically, that's it, that's all we're looking.
What's, what's the drainage line on Union Street there?
I haven't got that part on.
Twelve inches.
It's twelve inches everywhere.
I had to ask that question.
That would work for this one. Because, what's the total acreage on, on 26, I mean, 1.8 is total acreage on all three lots, right?
No, just for the.
Just for the big lot.
For the big lot.
For the big lot, and then what about 40 Union?
It's about two and a half total.
Two and a half total.
Yeah.
So, two and a half, whatever that permits under regulation, and just to make a notation, you see a factory stuck in there, that's the phosphorus plastic that's down hill, right? There's a lot of elevation between them. Right.
Is there any Business B adjoining this, that's left?
No. No.
Everything else is, is residential.
Everything around is residential.
Yeah, I just, I didn't wanna spot zone somebody else, you know?
Right.
To cause a problem, that, that was my way.
And that's why 40 Union and 44 Union Street are joined in the petition, so that it's contiguous for the whole rezone.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good spot for new housing, right downtown Oakley, and I like to see something, and I'm looking forward to seeing something nice in that area.
Do we have any feedback from the owners of 40 and 44 Union Street on this rezoning?
So, they joined in the petition, and that's part of the petition and the part of the record, they signed.
Yeah.
I'll make a bar for the organization to change just the, right now, second.
I have a motion made and seconded.
We have to close it.
Oh, we have to close the hearing.
But I don't know if there's anyone in the audience.
Is anyone in the audience who wants to say anything? Or, Mr. Mashan?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
You may.
Great to see everyone.
Good to see you.
Been a while.
Yes.
It's, it's wonderful to see the city moving forward to fill the gaps in the housing need, it really is, and you know, this particular piece of land.
It really is. And, you know, this particular piece of land, I think the last time, I visited this afternoon and walked it, by the way. Um, and I saw the old doggy daycare and the businesses out back, but it is basically residential in that neighborhood. And I think it would be a good fit for the neighborhood, the culture of it. Um, I'm glad to see you addressing Mr. Frye's issues in the previous piece, and you're going to be considerate as you go through, you know, making these big decisions when it comes down to trying to provide more housing. I'm in AIS, as you know. Uh, we're pushing now, uh, we were, we're a little under 1,100, we're pushing close to over 1,200 now. People working there, and a lot of the people are just, every day, you know, dying to get into a, a quality apartment. And, uh, you know, Mike and his dad have come up with a piece. You know, you could imagine living in a really quality, nice apartment in the downtown neighborhood with all the things we have going on downtown, that we can enjoy, the restaurants and all the activities and events and everything. Think it's just a perfect fit. And, you know, if it was going to be a commercial venture, it probably would have happened in the last 10 years. Uh, but as we know, that's been a vacant lot for a long time. So, I commend you for taking on the onus of trying to provide more housing. I think this is a great project for the city. Uh, Mike has been involved in the housing in this community for almost 25 years now. Oh, you've had, no, you've had 25 houses.
He's 25.
He looks good for that.
To be, to be transparent, Mike's my son-in-law. And Wayne has been my carpet guy since 1985. So, I'm hoping I can give him a discount. But it doesn't work that way, Tommy. Uh, but in the meantime, you know, I, I, it's great that you're taking on, taking a look at these projects and making sure that they fit and they work in the neighborhoods. And I just, I commend you for it, and I appreciate you moving forward on this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marchand. Okay. Do I have anyone else to just make any comments? Anything from the board? Okay, just a motion to close the hearing. I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion carries.
No. We got another.
We got a... No, we got Chick-fil-A.
You gotta, you gotta wait for us to vote. We're not voting yet.
Right, right.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. No, just to close the hearing. Get the great sandwich.
You got coupons for sandwiches?
Can you not see this stuff? We don't like chicken. Just joking. The Ethics Commission, we're only...
Which is very...
Some folks are going to have to figure out how to use the wireless.
We'll leave that up to you, Jason.
Yeah. Yeah, I should, I should work on a consultation. Oh, is that right? Maybe we should turn it on.
Is it, do we get fun, fun?
Any introductions, all right. So, I can give a quick introduction as Joey's setting up, and I'm Kerry McCormick, Director of Development, Crosspoint Associates, Crosspoint Purchase with Twin City Plaza. A few years ago, um, we have a number of improvements that we're making, um, was before you, not too long ago, as we look to convert the workers' credit union to a new Starbucks. We just started construction on the new Starbucks. We converted the Bob's store to Boot Barn, and we're going to make some additional changes there. So, we've been pretty active and appreciate the involvement and the support from the community, so. Tonight, we're before you to look at converting what is the former Uno's Restaurant to a Chick-fil-A Restaurant. We've, uh, done a lot of work leading up this part. We've, um, met with NIBA, um, their coordinator, who deferred us to Massot. Who basically waived any, uh, needs for any, uh, Massot permits. So, um, who waived out of Massot. We've also gone before Conservation Commission and received our order conditions through Conservation Commission, abetting some wetlands to the right there on the site. Um, and most recently, we, uh, went before the Tech Review Committee, uh, received some comments back from them. We've incorporated, um, and highlighted, which Joey will walk you through, I, um, our pedestrian access plan and how it's connected to the neighborhoods in the back and through the center. Um, some technical infrastructure changes with the, um, water wanting to connect both the domestic and fire separately to the main. Um, and, uh, and then Police Sergeant Robichaud had some questions about some of the intersections and things like that. And our traffic engineer, Jason Adams, had, uh, had a conversation with him to get his immediate feedback on what his concerns were and talked through that. So, he'll be able to address some of those tonight. But Joey Funseke is our Civil Engineer from Bowler Engineering, and again, Jason Adams behind me is our Trap Engineer from Bowman. And I'll let Joey take you through the site plans, and I appreciate you done tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Again, I'm on second with Bowler, Project Manager. I'll just get, this looks like the last slide, but we'll quickly kind of go through it. I didn't bring the popcorn, so I... It's over. But I'll just do a quick, uh, presentation, just quick overview on the existing and then the proposed conditions here. So, highlighted blue there is the existing Uno's Restaurant. This is at, um, 905 Mary Mav. It's, uh, map 21, Lot 3. Uh, this is all, you know, within the Twin City Plaza. I'm sure you all are pretty familiar with this site. Um, as Kerry had mentioned, there are wetlands to, uh, the right of our site. It's kind of a, a former, I think, drainage basin that was here, and all the drainage kind of heads offsite from here. We did receive conservation approval on this. I can get into that further in the, uh, presentation as well. Parcels located in Commercial District C. So, our proposals for a, uh, restaurant with a drive-through, which is, um, allowed via special permit for the drive-through use. So, again, this is our, our current site. The existing Uno's was a 5,400 square foot building. Um, had parking directly associated around kind of the, the west, south, and east side of the property. I think it had total 57 cars, um, parking, um, along there. Services, uh, had water service, uh, water services to the site, gas, electric, and sewer service. Infrastructure on site, and the drainage, um, was collected and conveyed towards that, uh, that basin area to the east of the site. Quick overview there with Route 2 on the bottom, and then Kerry's here above us. So, I'm going to flip over to, um, so again, this is just, just an existing conditions plan. Again, this is the building here, just kind of highlighting where the existing curb line is along the perimeter. Uh, this is right at the top of the bank before it drops down towards the, uh, the wetland area. Um, and then we'll also discuss kind of this offsite parking here as it's a part of our overall parking proposal for, for this use.
So, is that curb about the same descent?
Under the proposed conditions?
Yeah.
We're, we're actually bringing it in, so we flip to this plan. So, as you can see, this area in green here, this is where the existing curb line was.
Okay.
Where it is today. So, we've kind of brought in the development. The, the reason for that really is there's an existing sewer and drain line that exists along the east and southerly side of the site that Chick-fil-A wanted to keep that drive-through outside of, in case there are any maintenance issues that doesn't disrupt any of the, the drive-through traffic here, so. So, again, this is, in the proposed model, the existing Uno's building demoed, we'll be proposing a 5,200 square foot Chick-fil-A restaurant with interior dining, uh, as well as a, a two-lane drive-through. Um, as part of that drive-through, there's two other kind of light, uh, looks a little different, um, colored areas. The, uh, they're kind of like a, uh, beige color. The rectangles, those are two canopies, um, that are part of it. I'm not sure if you all have been to, uh, a newer Chick-fil-A, but canopies were kind of brought in to their program, um, probably about four years ago. Um, and it's really for team members to be out there during their peak times to be taking orders and delivering meals as well. So, there's one at the, um, meal delivery area, which is on the east side of the building, and then one south, which is where we would, uh, order the meals at the order station. We, we're showing an exterior patio to the west of the building. We've got 18 parking stalls directly in front of the restaurant, um, which is, you know, will be for third-party delivery pickup. They have their ADA spaces in front, um, and then we also are, have the traffic, um, trash enclosure on the west side, northwest corner of the site as well. The area that's kind of shaded off to the northeast corner, uh, so that's an existing, uh, parking area that will be part of the lease for Chick-fil-A. So, that area contains about 68 parks, um, in that area. And that's going to remain as it is today, uh, as part of, as part of the overall parking for Chick-fil-A. So, the benefit of that is to allow for employees to be parking, uh, offsite there, so not parking in that. 18 stalls are directly in front of the building, allows employees to park out there, and it also, you know, allows for some overflow for any dining guests to, to park there as well. So, the total parking will be 86 when you combine 18 and the, um, and the total parking.
What's required?
Uh, 52 required. The drive-through lanes themselves, uh, is about, uh, let's see, 600, a little over 600 linear feet of, uh, drive-through, which is a little bit more than, you know, the standard Chick-fil-A double drive-through. So, there's a little bit additional queuing here, uh, that's provided here, just given the, the nature of the site. And just given it's a, a pretty square site, uh, it makes letting out that, that drive-through a lot easier, uh, through here. Utilities are going to be similar to the existing condition here. You know, we'll be tying into, you know, a new gas service, which gets coordinated with the gas company, new electric service. The water was a comment, uh, that we got from DPW. Uh, we did coordinate with their, with their team, uh, to bring in, the surveyor didn't have the current, uh, water service, so they, they gave us some tie information. The existing restaurant, um, does have separated, uh, sewer, I'm sorry, uh, fire and domestic services. So, our, our plan is to cut cap those close to the main and then extend those into the building, so it will have a, a separate six-inch fire, um, and a, a two-inch domestic. They were the same size services that Chick-fil-A uses for their current product, so that worked out well, without separate services there, um, with that. Sewer, we'll again, just have a new grease trap installed, uh, for the kitchen waste, and then it'll tie into the existing system, which is, um, just north of that kind of upside-down canoe island, near the parking field. See landscaping, um, you know, a big improvement over what's there today. There's, today, there's just some kind of interior planting around the building. Uh, we've got about a 5,000 square foot reduction in paved surfaces, uh, with this build. So, for conservation, um, was a great plus in their mind, just kind of removed a lot of that pavement, a lot of pavements, um, you know, collecting stormwater and conveying that to the basin. Here, we're reducing rates and volumes just by the sheer reduction of impervious coverage, but we're also proposing a buyer retention, a small buyer retention basin here, um, to benefit some of the, um, uh, surface runoff from, associated with a portion of the drive-through area. So, we get some water quality improvements, some infiltration, um, benefits here. So, again, it's a redevelopment, but just trying to enhance some of the stormwater, uh, on-site. The rest, you know, new catch basin, the weak diesel, put it as well for some additional water quality. But landscaping's, um, um, improvements include, you know, some additional canopy trees throughout, and then just a, um, you know, various ornamental grasses, shrubs, and perennial flowers kind of throughout. So, definitely an enhancement over the existing, um, landscaping that's there today. Lighting, we've also showed lighting, um, as part of the set. Again, these will all be dark sky compliant. Um, just some, a few canopy, a few area lights within the parking area. Um, obviously, within the limit of work of the Chick-fil-A kind of property area, the existing offsite parking has its own, uh, lighting that's currently in place there, so we're just sort of, you know, proposing new lights for, um, you know, this new, I guess, a new Chick-fil-A build area. Canopies will have recess cans, and there'll be some building-mounted lights as well, just over some ingressing restors, uh, surrounding. But again, all dark sky compliant. Lastly, I'll just kind of briefly, just kind of hit, um, the pedestrian plan here, and I'm not sure where all these blank photos that aren't loading, but... This was submitted as part of the, the revised plan set that, that we had sent out last week. On this, just kind of highlighting where the existing pedestrian paths are today and how they got to the, the former Uno's building. So, in red here are existing sidewalk locations. Yellow, these yellow dash areas indicate existing crosswalks that are painted, um, across Carriage Court and, you know, across some of these drive-aisles. So, under today's condition, there's existing sidewalks from kind of this larger residential area, uh, in the northwest corner. Through, you know, along Carriage Court, um, there are crosswalks in place to get you across the street, and then again, concrete sidewalks that sort of bring you down to kind of in front of the, the former Uno's site. Um, and currently, there is a, a painted, it's a seven-foot-wide, uh, pedestrian path, uh, that leads from Carriage Court to Uno's. That will remain under this condition, will likely be, you know, repainted. Um, but we're also proposing, I'll zoom in a little bit, a, just a crosswalk, um, across that existing pedestrian path you see there in that yellow dash line, to, you know, a new walkway within that, that parking area. Again, an additional crosswalk and then to the front, the front con, the, the front walk to the front door for Chick-fil-A. We're also providing a crosswalk, um, to this, to this remote kind of parking area in the northeast corner as well, just to, just to give the pedestrians a path for them to, to travel from that parking area to the building. But wanted to kind of highlight that there is that pedestrian connection today. And I know there was a comment that we had received in the comments staff's, like, handover, but, um, just, just regarding that, that connection to the, um, development to the more use, so. I can load photos of that walk. For some reason, it's not loading here, but, um, you can, um, I can bring those up if needed. Wanted to just kind of quickly hit, um, the building elevations. Uh, again, this is just a standard Chick-fil-A build. Uh, this is what all of their, um, locations look like. Uh, this does show kind of renderings of what the canopy looks like at the, this is at the, um, the meal delivery or the meal pickup side. Again, it spans both, um, both drive-through lanes, just, um, how the, the outside patio looks and just the brick beside. The trash enclosure uses the same material, same brick. Uh, it's fully enclosed, uh, on all four sides. So, there's just, uh, solid doors along the front, so you don't, you don't see any, uh, trash, trash receptacles, um, in there. We also provided details for the trash enclosure. Um, again, this kind of gives you an idea of, uh, this is just a shed location, uh, on the left side. But again, it's all enclosed. The shed's the only portion of it that's closed, um, at the top. Again, it's a shed, the operator will sort shovels, et cetera, in there, and the rest of it's open, uh, but, um, enclosed on all three sides. And we've included the sign packages. I'm happy to kind of run through if needed. Um, I've got a sign package here if we want to get back to it, and I'm certainly here to answer questions, um, on that. With that, I will turn it over to Jason.
This one's fine.
Yeah, so I'll just say here, yep.
Good evening. Our, for the record, Jason Adams with Bowman Consulting. Um, we were hired to review the traffic impacts of the project. So, we completed a traffic impact study, uh, focusing on the internal roadways serving the, the Twin City Plaza. There's no, there's no change in access proposed as part of this project relative to how the Twin City Plaza currently operates. There are multiple access points to the plaza. Um, we, we conducted traffic volume counts in March, uh, during the weekday afternoon and Saturday midday peak periods. Uh, as part of our early due diligence, we did share... As part of our early due diligence, we did share some traffic information with MASTIOT as Kerry went over it as we worked to determine the potential state process and MASTIOT did determine that we did not need to come forward for any form of access permit as, again, we are not changing the access to the site, but we do a lot of Route 2. So we wanted to make sure we had our eyes dotted and t's crossed before we moved anything forward. We've been working with Joey and his team on the design of the roadway network and the pedestrian improvements that Joey was just highlighting there. You know, a significant portion of the vehicle trips to a Chick-fil-A either come from what we call internal capture trips, so the vehicles are already within the plaza, so they might be going to the supermarket or another use and they stop at Chick-fil-A or vice versa, or what we call pass-by trips, which are vehicle trips that are already traveling past the general roadway network. So, you know, generally speaking, a fast food restaurant doesn't bring a lot of brand-new vehicle trips. Chick-fil-A might have a slightly higher percentage than the normal, but in the end, we're really drawing from the vehicles already traveling past the site and the vehicles that are already within the plaza. So as we completed our traffic analysis, prepared a traffic impact study, our data shows that we're not seeing any significant impact to the operations within the plaza itself along Carriage Court. As was mentioned, we did receive a comment from Sergeant Robichaud. I had the chance to talk to him at the beginning of last week. His primary concern really was vehicle speeds within the plaza, kind of on the east-west community.
Yeah, Carriage Court.
Well, not even Carriage Court, the internal roadway that comes of fun.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Was his specific concern. You know, the UNO's is vacant, there's another vacant property in there. He had personal observations about vehicle speed correct and voiced a desire to have more vehicles traveling on Carriage Court, which is the designated thoroughfare between, within this plaza here. We did talk about how the project itself is presenting some additional pedestrian improvements here. There's also just going to be frankly more activity if the project is built. I think people often seek out areas where there are not vehicles and travel faster in those areas. I think naturally, and I believe I don't want to speak fully for the sergeant, I believe he was in agreement with that, that once something like this is built, people are going to likely change some of their driving patterns and behaviors to not be traveling quickly past something that is now, you know, a vibrant piece of the plaza. So he had, you know, raised just his thoughts, wanted to voice those around the overall access and just working, you know, wanted to see our project work with the city and the police just to try to do what we can in terms of improving overall safety and operations in the area and certainly what we're looking to do here as well.
But that'll come in time as the other part of the development is done.
Correct.
Piece by piece out.
Right.
I mean, it used to be a lot busier there. You know, it used to be a lot crazier too.
Carriage Court, a city mode or is it private?
I think it's.
I think it's private. I think it becomes city.
It's city, near the apartments. And then when it happens.
Yeah, it's internal to.
It's internal to the.
As far as I know, it is, until it gets around to the other side.
Correct.
Where the old Kmart was.
We had this conversation when we were talking about the Starbucks because the stop signs of that, that four-way right there.
How many cars are in the queue or can be in that queue?
We would, yeah, it's make fit 25 to 30.
There's two lanes.
Yeah, they got two lanes.
Yeah, which is more than the typical Chick-fil-A and then even at that, the queuing space is not immediately.
I remember there's Chick-fil-A over 50 hours. But in 10 minutes, we're not through.
Right.
That's true. I can't disagree with one statement you made. There's no many people, I've driven 15 miles to go to Chick-fil-A.
The whole idea is we build more as if there's a smaller amount of travel you'll have to go as there's more in market. That is certainly what Chick-fil-A is hoping to do is make it easier for everybody, which I think in turn kind of uses some of that draw.
It's a good addition to the plaza.
Yeah, I think it is.
It'll be busy.
Well, I think, I gotta open it up. Okay. Way else from the audience?
I just want to point out, not that I think it's necessary, but the police do ask about having additional traffic here.
You want to read through the department head?
Yes.
Again, I don't think it's necessary here, it's.
I don't either.
The complex is the complex. There's nothing.
I didn't want to put it on the round.
Yeah, you want me to go through them?
Yeah, go ahead.
So conservation approves, they issued an order of conditions on May 13th. The order was issued with standard conditions plus the condition that the conservation agent be notified before any selective trimming, tree removal is completed adjacent to or within the wetland on a site. This order will be signed officially issued following our next May 27 meeting. Border Health is looking for kitchen plans, complied with its demolition requirements of the existing building, make sure proper drainage is working at drive-through and no pooling of training occurs. Building approves. DPW, the existing water main that is shown is incomplete, the domestic water service and fire service lines need to be separated with each service being connected directly from the water main to the building. Please contact engineering department with any questions. Assessor approves of the plan. Updates to the site, new construction with modern improvement and come to the new, to the now vacant building, overall improvement of site tax revenue. Police Department would like to see pedestrian improvement planned for safe, well-lit cross white walk and sidewalk access going across main, the main road for plaza outside the zone. This business will draw more people to the location than in the past, which will draw more pedestrian foot traffic even from other parking areas, if not from large residential area adjacent to the plaza. All right, that was, okay, we have two from police. And then the one from the sergeant is request peer review of traffic. Current reports confined to the plaza and shows one crash from 2017 to 2021. I suggest that Miriam Abbott, Abbott, since they are accessed to the plaza, my data has 637 crashes from 2018 to 2024. Abbott at Chalmers is one of the highest crash intersectionists in the city. Nothing from fire?
They did not have any comment.
Okay.
Yep. Did you have the hard copy back up? I just got, we just got all their comment response today in a revised plan. Did you bring?
Yeah, I've got the.
So it hasn't been reviewed, I haven't sent it out to the police department yet for their comment.
There is a revised plan?
Yeah.
Based upon the comments?
Yeah, basically it was two revisions, one just showing this, kind of highlighting the sidewalks that are there through the plaza, highlighting the crosswalk improvement and then the water service.
The two lines.
Yeah, splitting.
Those are.
So you already reacted.
Can you read my comments?
We talked about that.
I don't know.
Two lines.
Oh. You get the thing with the two lines.
If you can respond to, you're going to read them and they can respond if they have any.
To mics?
Yeah. It was one waiver request.
All right, your waiver is the location arrangement, dimensions of loading and unloading. Well, so he says the applicant requests a waiver for identifying the loading and unloading zones on the site. Large truck deliveries will occur during early morning and off-hours. Truck drivers will unload within the drive aisle directly in front of the restaurant.
Is that pretty much standard?
It is, yeah. I mean, it's just not striping an area for unloading and loading operation. They'll typically perform their operations prior to store opening, so usually it's early morning.
When do they open?
They open at 6:30, 6:30 to 10:00 Monday through Saturday.
Breakfast, huh?
Yeah, breakfast is not a popular, they do. It's not a very, up here it's not, down south it's very popular, but up here it hasn't caught on, so.
Chicken or waffle?
Maybe Lemons catches on, but they are open. They obviously.
So that, in terms of the interim planner's review of the site plan application for parking, he requests clarification on how these additional off-site spaces will be designated for the use of Chick-fil-A customers and employees. I think you addressed that.
Right.
And then access standards, requesting clarification on whether a traffic impact statement will be submitted or if a waiver request will be submitted. So we just heard from. Sidewalks, suggest this path be remarked clearly, that a pedestrian access plan be developed for customers who park in the area northwest of the Chick-fil-A site beyond, address that. Trash, details on the screening and an elevation of the dumpster enclosure have been requested by the project engineer. I think those were the highlighted portions from that. Right? And I think they've all been addressed.
Okay.
Agreed.
So I think the only waiver outstanding would be on the traffic review, right? Traffic study?
Yes, section 2263.2, point three, and.
That's.
They provided a traffic study, the police wanted a peer review of that.
They wanted a peer review of the traffic study.
I don't think.
I don't think.
I always vote for that, but this is.
I think we know the area.
And it's an empty space, it's built to have stuff there.
And it was very busy when it was.
Yeah. It wasn't busy enough, they closed.
Still a lot of these doors.
I think that busy was later. There were more nighttime till business.
So the question is, are we going to make them come back again?
No.
No.
I say we condition it up upon the approval of the police and if they have a big issue with that.
So then we should.
I think so.
You don't have an issue. Motion closed.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Any discussion? Kerry, now I'll call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no, more say carries. Okay, call order.
Patrick Perla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Sal Chakune.
Here.
Tavatorioso.
Here.
Tom Kertanen.
Present.
Jason Hare.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
John Siza.
Yeah. Minutes, we don't have any?
Minutes.
No new plans?
Yes.
Old business. Site plan, 435 and 481 Lancaster Street, map 443, parcels 1 and 2-2B slash Elm Hill Avenue, map 357, parcel 17, multifamily development. This has been continued.
July 21st.
Yes, July 24th.
First. First.
Yeah, 21st. Okay, the second is a special permit, 435, 481 Lancaster Street, map 443, parcels 1 and 2, 2B, Elm Hill Avenue, map 356, parcel 17, multifamily development. This has been continued to July 21st.
That's correct.
Okay, new business, city council petition, 4825, Thomas and Bavinci representing Wake Mike.
Way Mike.
Hello, Wake Mike, yeah.
Way Mike.
Way Mike, Way Mike. LLC proposes to change to following zoning districts to be located entirely residence RB district for 26 Union Street, assesses parcel 9-4. For Union Street, assesses parcel 94-5, and 44 Union Street, assesses parcel 94.6.
I make a recommendation, make a motion for a positive recommendation for the zoning change to the city.
Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to make a positive recommendation to the city council. Any further discussion? You're not on call for the vote, all favor say aye. Most say no, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Site plan application, 4905, Miriam Avenue, map 261, parcel 3, proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant with drive-through. I have a waiver on.
I make a motion to approve the waiver.
I have a waiver on a peer review on.
Traffic.
No, no.
No.
Yeah, it was a request from the.
Yeah, but we can just disregard that. It's a waiver for.
That's not a waiver though, John.
Location arrangement and dimensions of loading and unloading.
Right. That's the only waiver.
Okay, I thought we had to fill.
It's section 22-6, dot 1, dot 1, 2.
Okay, so we have it on the waiver.
Second.
Any discussion? You're not on call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no, motion carries. Okay, site plan application, 4905, Miriam Avenue, map 261, parcel 3, proposed Chick-fil-A restaurant with drive-through with waiver. Any discussion? You're not on call for the vote.
I make a motion to approve the site plan with.
With the one waiver.
With the waiver and with any conditions from department head except for the peer review.
On traffic. On traffic study.
And the standard that the planning director asked of.
Yes.
For certificate of access.
Yeah.
As Paul said. Do we have any further discussion on that? You're not on call for the vote, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Tom second. Motion carries. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Good luck, boys.
Good luck.
Catch up.
Communications.
When will you be open?
ASAP.
Couple of weeks.
But yeah, they'll go back and, you know, obviously having approval tonight has.
Shaved it a lot.
Yeah.
Yes. One issue between the planning commission. MRPC, representative of board nomination, Dean Valier, on 519, 25, we're representative from July 1st, 2025, January, to 2026, year one.
First reading.
First reading.
Second reading. Motion to.
Is it the second, do we nominate, then this is the first?
First reading.
First reading, so it's just a reading.
So we just have to.
Sorry, Dean, you're not official yet.
I gotta give you two readings. One issue that joint traffic committee, MJTC, representative of wood, nominee Elizabeth Wood on 519, 25, for representative for July 1st, 2025, and 26, year first reading. Directors report, planning and development director report.
Would you like to welcome Elizabeth back?
Yes.
Welcome back.
Thank you for coming.
We didn't do too bad, I thought this was going to go well.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Most say no, motion carries.